Good afternoon. We will start our work session, call to order. Today we are going to discuss the legislative platform. Board member Parker's out of town for work and board member Baker will be here shortly. We'll start with Todd Beek is going to go over our standing positions of the ASBSD and then any discussion on changes as well as maybe where we might not have the same position as that.
Yeah, and I'm actually going to start us off just a little bit. No, that's fine. Todd will take the bulk of it. Just for kind of a recap, we've been meeting with area legislators as kind of a runway to the legislative session and just sharing some different information about things that we are thinking about as a school district as well as things that may be statewide or in our region. And looking at just some of the feedback and just some of those conversations to then distill that down into what will become your board's priorities for the year as we kind of view then the session through that lens. I think these have been really helpful. It's helpful just to get to know the public servants who fill those roles as legislators and act on our behalf as, you know, representatives of our community and knowing, you know, what comes and goes during a session. There's just a lot to keep track of. And so I think we always want to be a resource for them in terms of things that affect our students in our school district. So we value their time and I think that's been time well spent. So to that end, some of the things that we'll go through today are those things that we have kind of identified through that process or the needs of our school district along with the positions that come from ASBSD and then how we then look at the session as things come up that may be carried in by one of the legislators or things that we are actively asking someone to maybe bring in on our behalf. So with that, I will turn it over to Todd and he'll kind of go through some of the highlights of issues that we've discussed and then the board can have a conversation about what we see kind of emerging as maybe our two or three top things.
Great. So before we get into the ASBSD items, yeah, we'll just go through some of the issues we talked about with the legislators we've met with so far. The most important always is state aid, at least. That's my perspective anyway. So obviously, we talked about state aid and we've talked about the Teacher Compensation Review Board that issued their final report in September. And we talked about the relationship. You know, we can talk about this, you know, what we spend on other items such as administration. We can talk about whether or not our teachers are experienced as teachers in other states. You know, we can talk about whether or not they have as many advanced degrees as they do in other states. But when we look at why we got to a point and we're slipping back, you got to look at what has happened with the per student allocation. And we discussed with them that over 80% of our revenues across the state come from state aid and local efforts, which is the state aid formula, the two together, and over 80% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. And if 80% of your revenues are going up 1.2 or 1.4% a year, you can probably expect that's what your salaries are going to go up. And if you want to try to keep up with other states or hold our position with other states and they're going up 3% a year, that's what you better plan on doing for state aid. Just the relationship between the two is uncanny and if you want salaries to grow 3%, 4%, whatever percent a year, that's what you should plan on increasing the state aid formula. So that's state aid. Questions on that or comments or anything? We also talked about juvenile justice and I'm not the expert on that, but he's in the room if you have specific questions on that. But the state has allocated $400,000 for statewide diversion programs and 200 and then that's divided up, $250 of reimbursement to the county for each juvenile that successfully completes a diversionary program. So that's the money that's allocated right now. Now, the reality is that since the juvenile justice reforms, juveniles have quickly figured out that if they don't go through the diversionary programs, that they, there are often no repercussions for that. There isn't follow-up and saying, oh, you didn't do the diversionary program, so you're going to have to face the consequences that you would have faced had you not signed up for the diversionary program. So we've stressed with the legislators we met with that there has to be teeth behind that. And then if there's teeth behind that, the appropriation's going to have to be greater because the kids will do it and the $250 probably isn't enough of an allocation for a full diversionary program. So we said, first of all, we've got to get, we've got to crack down so that kids are actually doing the diversionary program and there's consequences if they don't. And then when that happens, you're going to have to allocate a little bit more money to be able to fund those. And that's not that that money goes to schools. It goes to the county and then they send it on to their partners who operate the diversionary programs.
And I sit on the JDAI statewide board and what's happened is there's a false reporting number occurring because the lower level crimes really aren't getting reported. And so they're saying, well, that crime has gone down, but the higher crime, more serious crimes have risen. And that's because they're not reporting these lower crimes because either the state's attorney or the police department have the resources to fulfill those crimes and get those to the court and so forth. So then children are, it looks like they're going, moving on up and doing higher crimes. So it's something that needs to be comprehensive. We're meeting with judges, the state's attorney's office, police and sheriff's office, as well as these providers to try to come up with some type of resolution to go on with this.
Yeah, and I would just add, this isn't something that's exclusive to the Sioux Falls School District. This is an area of concern. And we're really trying to, as some of these collaborative groups, really look at defining what defines successful completion of diversion. And are we all on the same page in agreement about what that means? And the bottom line is we just don't want it to be too easy for kids to just fall off the radar and to head down a path where we may have some better solutions where we can help them get back on track and help them be successful.
Exactly.
But that's something that our large school group, superintendent's group, discussed. It's something that I know is a concern in many areas and just wanting to do the very best for those students.
We also discussed with them, which probably isn't a huge issue, it is for the people that are affected, but it isn't a gigantic issue. It's psychiatric, psychiatric, PRTF, residential treatment facilities. And there was an issue with these like 10 years ago and it was solved for the most part, for most kids. And it was that if a child would go through the DSS process and get placed into that program, the parent could send them there. And then the school district where the PRTF site is located wouldn't have to try to build a school district where the child came from for providing them education services. They could get it through the state aid formula and through reimbursement from DSS. So it's worked great. No issues with that for probably the last 10 years or so. However, if you're on an IEP, an individualized education program, the IEP team chooses your placement. So if you are doing well in school and you're meeting all your goals, your education goals, and the problem is when you're at home at night, if you're having issues with your family at night and whether it may be psychiatric or whatnot, and the parents want to try to get that child into the program through the DSS placement thing, the law doesn't allow it because the IEP, because it would conflict with federal law. They thought it would in that the IEP team has to make that placement. We just have like a three or four-word change possibly to the current law that says if the IEP team determines that the child is meeting their goals and this wouldn't affect that adversely, they can play, they can go through the regular program as kids who aren't on IEPs. So it's just, it's not that many kids, but it's for those families that are affected, it's frustrating. Say, we should just get them off, get them out of the special ed program, you know, and this seems like a small little fix. So that is something we believe we're going to pursue as well.
And it's good because there already is a program in place and it's but for the child being on an IEP, those parents can't use that program. So.
It's just kind of a decoupling at a point in the process that allows a parent to go another route for that placement option.
We also discussed dual credit. I talked about it, but the expert is over there.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know that this is a platform, but one of the things that we've talked about is looking at some language that would provide greater flexibility for students to attain dual credit in high school, looking earlier than 11th and 12th grade, which is what's there right now. In fact, I just had my youth advisory group yesterday and one of the students said, case in point, I asked them about their opinion on that and she said, I would have liked to have taken a course this summer after my sophomore year, but she was still classified as a sophomore, so couldn't register for that, which would have allowed her a little bit more flexibility as that junior and senior scheduling. And so I don't know that it would add kids in terms of numbers of students pursuing dual credit, but as we develop new programs, as we look at options and flexibility for kids to be able to schedule things, you'd still have to have safeguards, parameters, qualifiers, all those things that we do right now. But there might be a better way to allow for some flexibility in 10th and possibly 9th grade. So we're working with some of our higher ed partners and we'll be asking the state to weigh in on that, but we're hoping that that's something maybe we can begin to kind of nudge in that direction.
And it's great because AP programs are allowed 9th on up. So to allow that dual credit and to allow those children to get more credit before they enter college is obviously at a better rate is a good solution.
Yeah, a lot of positives behind students earning dual credit. And so I think everybody's in agreement of that. We just always want to make sure that kids are capable of doing college-level work and, you know, some of those scheduling factors or summer programming or, you know, online courses, there's different layers of flexibility now and we just think that dual credit component should match that so that that's equally flexible and we can do what's right for students.
So speaking of college, students going to college or pursuing their post-secondary career, we've also spoke briefly, I guess, about the possibility of the ACT test replacing Smarter Balance for 11th graders so that it's a meaningful, more meaningful, probably meaningful test for them. Cynthia kind of took the lead on that.
So Nebraska and other states do use that as their mechanism for the state testing. You know, currently for our 11th graders, we use the Smarter Balance. And the great news about that is that it opens the doors for children who maybe were not going to take the ACT and then they maybe get a score and say, well, this changes things. I qualify for scholarship. I can get into this school. So it would just, it could lower our statewide and our district-wide ACT, but the benefits to opening those doors to other students, even though we are seeing that some schools are not requiring it, those same schools still do require it for scholarships. And so it's, I think it would be a better mechanism. I'm sure there's a cost difference between maybe Smarter Balance and ACT, but I think it's worth examining because I think it's just a better use of our state funds and our school district funds to use that as and our school district funds to use that as a mechanism for our assessments of our juniors in high school.
And we always want our assessments to be relevant. And we know that ACT has pretty high relevance for our high schoolers. And I was, I was doing a little bit of research yesterday. There's a number of states, I think there's something like 20 states, that require ACT as their high school assessment. And again, I asked our students about that yesterday, and they, they were pretty, they were pretty interested in that. And I asked them to do a little legwork with their peers just to see, would that make a difference to them? And what do kids think about that? But they said, you know, we already do things to be prepared for ACT. We have ACT prep. We're all kind of mindful of that. But they also thought that there are some kids that may not access ACT, either because of financial concern, there are supports for that, and there are, there's assistance, but kids don't always seek that out. And so they thought that that would be something very worthy of our consideration, and they were going to ask their peers about it. And we'll talk about that at our next meeting, but they thought it would be a big advantage to our students.
Just a few other items that have come up. It wasn't discussed with all groups, possibly MAP testing to replace the smarter balance for the other grades, fourth through eighth, the third grade. And we tried, we always talk about early childhood programming with our legislators, and there isn't a lot of tailwind for funding for that out of the state. But we discussed it with several of the groups that came in. Other than that, that's kind of, I think that covers most of the issues we discussed. Any questions on any of those or anything? Otherwise, I can take you to the ASBSD positions. You've got, on the front of your package is the standing positions. I'd like to focus on legislative resolutions, which are behind page seven. The standing positions are, the pages are numbered. The resolutions, they are not. So I'll quickly go through some resolutions that are new or have changed or they're deleting. If you see one that I missed, you can, you can let me know, and I'll talk about it, just a few of them that I want your feedback on. I think a lot of these are non-controversial. So A6 is the first one. It's a, it's a new one. It's on content standards. Like I said, the pages are numbered, but if you, if you go, get past page seven, and then item six, there's an item on content standards and curriculum adoption. Like I said, I'm not going to read all of them or go through all of them. B1 is an amended item, and that really has to do with homeschool eligibility for extracurricular activities. And, and the requirement, it just basically says that schools should get to set the policies and rules, who's eligible to participate in these items. And they should be, the homeschool students should obey those rules as well. B9, and if you want to talk about them further, please stop me. B9 is an amendment. It's on behavioral and mental health resources. And it's a real minor amendment. It's just wording changes. B12 is, has to do with, now this is local governments, and it has to do with the date of school board elections. There's been bills the last two or three years trying to set the date as maybe the, you know, the election day in November or whatnot. And, and they've had this position, but they're basically slogging it down to, it should be held on any date that's determined by the school board, and the legislature shouldn't try to set what that date might be. So that's B12. B14 is a new one, and it is, opposes any further immunization exemptions for students for school admission beyond what is currently permitted in state law. So that's B14. B15 is also new, and it, it comes up almost every year. So it's not a new concept, but it's a new resolution, which is the state should host a website where local governments can put their minutes and all of their required documents so people can know to go there. And then that would replace having to print them in your local newspaper.
Do you think they're going to do a fiscal note on that one? See what the savings would be for school districts?
No, I don't. They never do. We spend about $50,000 a year on legal notices and printing our minutes and whatnot. C5 is the next one. It's just an amendment. They just, they're just changing. The law used to refer to alternative instruction, which we all called homeschool. Now the law refers to homeschool. So they're just changing that, that reference from alternative instruction to homeschool. C6 is also an amendment. This one, this one I'm going to go over fast, but we're going to come back to it. This says, ASBSD supports adherence to the state inflationary index factor, defined in STCL 131310.1, which requires school districts to annually receive an increase in state aid. And they're crossing out a 3% inflation, whichever is less. That's what's in the current law right now, and they're just taking that out. That's the only change they've made to this. The rest of it is just basically saying schools need to know that they're going to get funding, and the state needs to uphold that standard and not go lower than that or whatnot. But they did take out the specific language that's in the current law, 3% inflation, whichever is less. There's another one coming up where I'll refer back to this. So that's C6. C7 is, has to do with accountability waivers, and it's just wording changes. It's not, it's not changing, it's not changing anything substantive about accountability waivers. C9 is a deletion. Last year, they were requesting additional COVID funding, and additional federal funding was provided, and so they're deleting, deleting that item. C10 is the one that relates to, the earlier one, we just talked about the index factor. They're deleting the item that asks increasing the state aid inflation factor to 3% or inflation, whichever is greater. And, or if the whole general fund budget isn't going up at a certain rate, it shouldn't exceed that either. I mean, it's treating schools kind of like everybody else. I think Cynthia, you got that put on last year, right?
Yeah, so we did amend it to go from 3% or greater, which, so I'm trying to wrap my head around why ASBSD thinks that taking out the language of 3% or less there, and also allowing, not being as strong on the waiver allowance if they don't give us the state aid increase for the accountability report, and then taking this out. I just don't understand how that's helping school districts to make, make neat their budget.
Oh, yeah. So I think I skipped over C7.
Yep.
I'll go back to that in just a sec. So my, my take on this is, they should, in the, if they, I mean, their reason for deletion of this is that the amendment made in C6 implies an increase in state aid must be provided annually. Well, I believe, and I'm, if you guys direct us to, we'll put it on the meeting because it has to be done in, you know, and it has to show up in our minutes, that we should say what it should be, which is 3% inflation, whichever is greater. And not imply, because I think you can read C6 to, for it to imply that we're just asking for 3% inflation, whichever is less. So if, I mean, we don't take actions here in these meetings usually, but if we have consensus on that, we will add that into the consent agenda to amend C6 and actually do what the C10 reason for deletion kind of implies is that, well, we're asking for it over in C6. So if we're going to do that, we should. Because I think we need to be clear on that. 3% inflation, whichever is less, is typically not enough. So I should go back to C7, which I skipped over, which has to do with accountability waivers. And this is, oh, yeah, it's just wording change, but the concept is good in saying, you shouldn't, if you're going to consider, or maybe it's another one coming up, the waiver process, but there's another one, I think, coming up, and it's all, it all ties together. If you're going to consider extending the, yeah, it is later, but same product, same concept. If you're going to consider new accountability requirements, like if that's the reason we slipped from 48th to 50th per the report we talked about earlier, if you're going to do that, then you're, you shouldn't be asking, you shouldn't be requiring anything more than you're actually giving out in state aid, which is the right concept. That's what we've been saying for years. If you expect 3% increases, you should give 3% increases. But then we need to tie that back to C6. So, right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we haven't, we haven't worded it exactly. We will word it for the Monday night meeting. So then, and then that'll get that exactly right. And then we have to submit that then to them, ASBSD, by Tuesday so it can be on the agenda for November 19th.
November 19th. As you have any other changes as it relates to the 19th, if I could just get that one.
Yeah.
Well, we have to vote on it first, so that's, we'll all see it at that.
Right. So if you see, if you see items in here that, that's the one, that's my biggest stickler when I was going through it. If there's other items in here that you either noticed now or you see between now and Monday, we can get those on the agenda as well if that's something the board wants to consider. But that will be one that we'll write up for Monday, unless you guys all say no, just let it be. But I'm not hearing that.
I won't be at Monday's meeting, so if you have, may have done it for me.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it to, yeah, we'll get it to you in advance of the meeting, for sure. C, I lost my spot. Okay, we just did C10. C11, they also are getting rid of. It was a one-timer for COVID because of the decline in fall enrollment almost across the board last year for schools. They said last year, use the greater of the previous year or this year because so many schools, and, but the governor did provide funding for that. So it doesn't apply this year. So that's C11. C12 is a proposal, new proposal for, to get some kind of state aid for homeschool kids that are in extracurricular activities. They don't generate any funds for schools, but there would be some expense, not a huge one, but some expense for, for, at the margin of those kids being in activities. So they're proposing that. C13 is that new one I just talked about a second ago. Is, is if they're going to implement new target teacher salary accountability targets, they should, it shouldn't be anything greater than what state aid went up, which is a good idea. I think kudos to them for coming up with that. So that's C13. Then we're on to D3, which they support the receipt of tax revenue to public schools from the sale of marijuana, which was legalized by the passage of constitutional amendment A. So apparently, in constitutional amendment A, some of that money can go to schools, and they're saying.
Well, that's still up at the Supreme Court.
Yeah, so.
And with the merger of recreational and medical, I'm wondering what will occur there. So this might be moot.
Right. Other than that, G5, they deleted, which has to do with federal relations. And it had to do with federal money and repurposing it for school choice options. I don't think with the current administration, it's, that's a, that's a probability or a possibility. So they're, they're deleting that as an annual item. One I did, it's not a huge deal. In the past, we've opposed it. I'm not saying we should, but if you go back to C again, C2, it's one that, it's just one I kind of pay attention every, you know. They want two-year enrollment averaging, and that, we had that for years. We had that from like 2008, somewhere around there, through 2016. And what happened when they were doing the half-cent sales tax and they were redoing all the state aid formula is they went from a 20%. There was an amendment put on to go from a 20% small school factor to a 25% small school factor. And that got on there, but then, then later on, they amended that bill to pay for that. Because I was actually surprised that, that BFM wasn't against that, that to pay for that, they got rid of the two-year enrollment average and basically evened out. So my take on it has been, you should probably get one or the other, not, not both because that was kind of the deal that was made in 2017. Although I wouldn't say we should go up and fight it, but it's just one that.
It's the Ben Heisman.
Yeah. So that's one, that was one other one that I just thought, this school district has never really been in favor of that, but it's probably not worth pulling out there and opposing. So that is, that's all the, the items from ASBSD that changed. The others, the others were already there from last year, and we commented on those in the past. So unless you have others, you want to possibly do something about, we'll write up an amendment for that, that one item so that the other item can be deleted, and we don't lose the concept of actually increasing the per student allocation in the formula.
Since I was the ASBSD delegate last year, I'd want to point out that there was a big push from some of the smaller school districts on item A2 to change that age from 18 to 16 for the compulsory age requirement. And so just for our delegate, Nan Baker's going to be our delegate this year. Just FYI, that might be something some school districts are going to push for. And luckily, it stayed at 18 is what their choice was on that. And then I'm seeing, so that the removal of that, of the G5, is there something similar of that on school choice funding with state?
They do have, I know I've seen it, item on.
Because if, I would ask that maybe we see that added.
I know they have an item in here. I'll try to find it on the insurance, you know, or the insurance.
They increased that Heideman.
I think you'll see that, that was part of some of the discussions from area superintendents. Was at a state level, we also would not advocate for that. I think this one was specific to federal, but if I'm clear, your question, is there a statement in there as to state funds being used for that purpose?
Yeah, and I don't see it, and so I guess.
So it's B5, and I missed that one, if I skipped over, I didn't even, that has a slight amendment to it. It says, ASBSD opposes state law allowing tax credits from the insurance company premium and annuity tax. And then they added, or any other private entity to fund a private school scholarship program and permits contributions to remain anonymous. But that's, so I did miss that one. That one has a slight amendment to it.
Yeah, and so that's only dealing with that insurance tax rebate.
I think the one above it.
Would, is that one have?
I think that one is more what you're looking.
Okay, good. Yeah, that, good. I just wanted to make sure that's in there. Perfect.
Yeah, that's important.
Yep. Thank you.
So those are covered, and we'll write up that one for Monday night.
Awesome. Yeah, so if any other board members have anything, please send it to Todd to get drafted so we can have it in the agenda for Monday's concept to discuss.
Thanks.
So just to cap this off, I think from our discussions and some of the things that have emerged as the biggest priorities, am I correct in saying primarily we're looking at state aid and teacher compensation along with a focus on juvenile justice, which may involve working with our partners and advocating for some things for supporting placement. placement services and things like that, as well as any judicial language or things that they may bring in. But we would still want that as one of our priorities. We'll start drafting those and then we'll bring them back to the board and then you can be reviewing and then we'll land on that for your formal priorities that we'll use then with our legislative breakfast. Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds great. Okay. Any public input on the legislative platform? Seeing then, we'll move on to the community cafe. Our first one, the highlights from that. Back to Sam.
Yeah. Just to go back to our district priorities, this year, you know, that one of our areas is community engagement. And this year, within our priorities that we set, one of those was having kind of a formalized, ongoing process for how we engage with our stakeholders. And that was going to be our community cafe model, which is just a good framework for how you go about doing a good structured conversation and where you can really glean what's said by everybody there, not just who speaks most often or who's up at a mic or things like that. And so our first community forum was with our Native American families and we had students, we had parents, we had a really good turnout. We provided childcare and food, of course, which always helps draw people to school events and district events. And so I'm just going to give you a couple of the highlights. We'll bring the highlights back to the board and then we'll look at that information that was gathered and look at what's actionable, what our liaisons will work on with our existing meetings that we already have as part of our Indian Ed grant. And the, the nice thing for our district is that we really have a great foundation to work from. We have parents who are very engaged. We have resources delegated to that, that continues to work with families for the infusion of, of Native American culture. We have our Ochetti Sakween standards that are infused in our curriculum. So they, they're very appreciative of the things that are already in place. And so really it's looking to the future and what do we build on. The, the big themes that emerged from the discussions that we had were how we support our kids, things like basic needs, some things you already see reflected in our district priorities this year, transportation, how we get kids connected to activities and athletics and how we really help to, to support everything that it takes for a student to be at school consistently and to achieve with their academics. Of course, we already know that there's work to be done with improving our graduation rates within our Native American population. And what does it take to really fill that gap and help all kids be successful? One of the themes that emerged was really lovely. It was creating a TO spey, which really means a sense of, of family and a sense of one big group that's united around a central purpose of supporting children and, and loving children. And so that was kind of a nice way within the culture to characterize what they are willing to do to support our work. Continuing our cultural priorities, culturally responsive classrooms is what our state refers to in terms of teachers, understanding students and the unique cultural lens that they bring to a classroom. And then again, back to the curriculum and just the awareness. And we talked about it in terms of really permeating what we do in our school district so that that Native American culture is visible and that students feel that sense of pride and that we see it show up in multiple places from fine arts to maybe even how we open a meeting or how we recognize that culture that's, that's so much a part of our state. So those were the big categories that emerged that we then kind of worked from. And then the other piece of that was everybody filled out something at the end that I, I really liked the technique that our facilitator used. It was, I liked, I learned, I will, and I recommend. And really what came from that is people want to be involved. They want to support that work. We're going to try and tie into our existing parent meetings a little bit more often in terms of administrative leadership. They meet regularly and we're going to be part of that. We'll do a follow-up meeting with them and make sure that they know what's happening and the progress of some things that we've put in motion this year. They love the format. They love being together and it was a really enjoyable evening. We liked having the blend of students and adults. It was really good to have some perspectives there of, of students. They, they agree, we have a great foundation, but we'd like to keep building forward. And that there was a general consensus that people really care. Parents care. The Native American community cares about it. Students, the school district cares. And together we can keep moving forward to look at where can we add, where can we build up and where can we really keep supporting our students. So it was a great evening, good learning, different things that we could talk about at our tables. That's that value of a small discussion group rather than, you know, a group that gets really large and, and you don't hear from people as often. The space worked well. We met at Garfield in the community center space and that was a great spot. And so we are looking forward to meeting with them again. And then we will have our next community forum later this month with another group of parents. And so then we'll bring that back to the board for some of those highlights. And really what we're doing through this whole process is just good listening and gleaning, what can we learn? Where can we improve? What can we add? And, and some of it is short-term, easy things that we can do and some of it's long-term planning and how we go about looking at that picture. And what was really great is that some of the things that were brought up are already reflected in our priorities this year, which is good because of the listening that we did last year. So I think it was very successful and we'll look forward to doing a lot more of those. Questions or comments?
No. Thank you for taking time to do these. It's very important for our community to keep, now that we can have these meetings in person especially, to have those conversations. You know, sometimes difficult, sometimes very emotional, but very helpful to help us move forward as a district to make sure we're serving all of our, our families and community members. Thank you. Any public input on the community cafe? Seeing then, anything else for the good of the board? Just a reminder to get that information to Todd if you have any other changes. If not, I do have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I have a motion on second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, same sign. We are adjourned.